Hi, I'm Skylar Carter and you're watching Real Florida Magazine.
Welcome back here today on the beautiful campus of Florida Panhandle Technical College, another in our series of Meet the Candidates. Here today with Gina McAllister, currently running for school board District 2 in Jackson County, Florida. This is your opportunity, at least virtually today, to meet Gina, meet all of the candidates, announced candidates in Jackson, Washington, Holmes and Bay County. Our opportunity to help you become a more informed, educated voter. All too often, we ask you to become engaged in that voting process, but we don't give you the tools. It's very important, at the end of the day, that you vote. More importantly, that you vote from an informed position. Hopefully through this series, you become just that. When we come back, we're going to talk to Gina about all of the reasons why she wants to be the next school board member in Jackson County. We'll be right back. As mentioned, our guest today is Gina McAllister. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you for having me.
You are currently one of the three candidates for school board District 2 in Jackson County.
That's correct.
And you will not have an incumbent this time?
No, it's an open seat.
Yeah. Kenny Griffin, longtime school board member. Is he just retiring? You don't have term limits, do you?
No, I think he just decided that he was ready to retire and hand the reins over to someone else to see what they could do in that office.
He's got a lot going on. He's involved in lots of things. I know he's involved in the employment and economic development in Jackson County. So, he's done a great job over the years.
Certainly.
In Jackson County, just as all of these counties, school board is a nonpartisan position.
That's correct.
So, you don't have a D or an R or an NPA after your name. Typically, Gina, we ask certain questions of any candidate within a respective race, one of which is our presumption that if you're running for an office, it's because you think you can do something better, you can do something different, that you don't agree with some of the things that are going on. At the end of the day, hopefully, you're going into it with the stance that you're going to try to make things better with the obtaining of that office. Why are you seeking the office of school board in Jackson County?
Well, Paul, I've spent my entire life in education. I have, I started very early on in my very early twenties as a high school teacher. Spent a lot of time in the classroom at different levels and got the opportunity to move to Chipola College where I've been very involved in the teacher education program there, the School of Education, since its inception in 2006. In addition to that, I have worked out in the private sector. I have an educational consulting company where I work with the state and the federal government as a grant evaluator. And of course, done a lot of other things throughout my career in education. And I just feel like now is the time for me to give back, to serve and to use that experience. And I think that that is the one thing that I believe I can bring to this office, is that experience. I really dedicated myself to seeing the big picture of education, not just what's happening locally, but understanding the implications of the federal mandates and the state mandates. And so, that's really what I want to do. I want to put that experience to work. And I think that that is something different that I have to offer as we move forward with this opportunity.
Now, you will go all the way to the general election, is that correct?
Well, it depends. Fifty-one percent of the vote has to go to the candidate in the primary election. And if that does not happen, the top two qualifying, the top two percentages will go to the November election.
So, being a nonpartisan race, it's basically the same thing, well, no, it's not the same thing as being all the same party. You have to have a supermajority, in other words.
That is correct.
So, you can't go into office with 34% of the vote.
That is correct.
If it were equally distributed.
Correct.
I love your answer because it opens up so many other questions. First of all, one that I always ask candidates for superintendent of schools or school board, do you feel that it's necessary to have been an educator to serve in that capacity?
I don't believe it's necessary. I think we've had a lot of very effective school board members that have come from other areas. I just think that if you do have someone that comes from that background, there's not as much of a learning curve when you get into arenas where you're exposed to things that are a significant part of the education system. I think that being an educator myself, that I can relate very well to the teachers that are in the classrooms. I think, you know, I've been there. I know what that's like. I go and spend a lot of time in those classrooms, even now, as I supervise interns and help our new teachers through our mentoring program. So, I think that I have a different insight. I don't know that it means that, I don't believe that it means that someone that is not in education can't be an effective leader, but I just believe that my experience is going to give me that edge.
Well, Gina, we sort of got ahead of ourselves. We typically start with allowing the candidate to introduce themselves to our viewership. So, let's back up for a moment. Talk a little bit about you, your family, your heritage, your history in Jackson County, your educational background, and what brings us up to today with you as that candidate.
Okay. Well, I'm actually from Jackson County. I have a long family history here in the area. As a matter of fact, I live on a family farm with my husband. That is the location where I live is actually where my great-grandparents homesteaded back in the 1800s. So, my roots run deep in the county and therefore, my interest in seeing it be successful in the future is very important to me. When I'm not out pursuing my educational interests, I spend a lot of time with my husband at the farm, working with the cows. We have pigs and raise and grow most of everything we eat. And I enjoy kind of a back-to-the-basics approach, preserving foods and canning things. So, that's me outside of the education arena. As far as my pursuits, how I got into education, I am proud to say that I came through the Jackson County school system, kindergarten through 12th grade. And when I was a senior in high school, I started to look at options for careers, as we all do. Had a very influential teacher at that time. I loved what she did. I loved how she interacted with students from all backgrounds and thought education might be for me. But, I had a lot of influence in the business industry. My father ran construction here in Chippely and I had worked with him in the business environment. I then had the opportunity to pursue some work in the insurance industry. And as I was going on to school, I toyed with the idea of business. And so, when I found business education as an option, that's the direction that I ended up going. And actually, I transferred to Troy University. And while I was there, worked in the insurance industry, but I had decided I was going to stay there until I walked into the classroom the first day. And I was hooked. That was it. There was no turning back after that. So, that's where I've been the whole time. And like I've told you earlier, I transferred back home to work at Chipola and worked on a few more degrees since then. I have a master's from Auburn and a specialist and a doctorate from the University of West Florida, all in education, because like I've told you before, that's my passion. And so, with all that said, that's how I got here. That's how I made the decision to want to serve the community in the area of education. Love this community, love education. I think that the combination will be a good mix.
First of all, thank you for being part of that agricultural industry. You know, many people don't realize how robust that ag business is in Jackson County. Agriculture having a presence all through Northwest Florida, but Jackson County having still a very large, very robust agricultural community. So, thank you for that. The other thing is that ecotourism and agricultural tourism has become a very large part of the tourism industry, one of the faster-growing, from corn mazes to having foreign tourists come and find out how you harvest cotton or corn and all. It's pretty amazing, right in front of our eyes, and for how many years did we just completely neglect that?
That's right.
As an opportunity. When you're from a city, you've never seen a cotton gin certainly, or peanuts being harvested. So, it's interesting. Have you guys gotten involved at all in the tourism part of that?
We have not. We've kind of just kept things fairly small. But I will say that my husband has done a lot of work in the past with riding lessons, you know, helping children to enjoy, you know, the horses as a sport.
Sure.
And so, that's something I too grew up doing. And I think it was a good way to keep me involved in a lot of very positive things and meet a lot of positive people. So, we haven't done that. We've talked about doing a few things, small things. I'm trying to push my husband to plant us a pumpkin patch in one of the areas that we're not using right now, because I think that would be a neat way to get kids to come to the farm and see some of the animals and just, you know. But that's over on the back burner for the moment, but something that we've talked about. And we enjoy growing a lot of our own vegetables and we sell a few of those to community members. And just something we enjoy. We sit down to a table about 80% of the time with a full plate of stuff that we either grew or raised there at the farm. That's kind of a neat experience.
Yeah, and healthy as well.
Oh, yes.
Jackson County, not unlike Washington, Holmes and even the northern part of Bay County, very large, very rural, somewhat sparsely populated for the landmass. Jackson County, about 1,000 square miles, just shy of 1,000 square miles, about 50,000 residents and about twice as many unpaved roads as paved, just like all their neighbors as far as the surrounding counties, fiscally facing lots of challenges. 2005, the bubble burst, lots of things happened at that time, were since recovered to some extent, and I think were resilient in Northwest Florida to a greater extent than they are in other parts of the country. All that said, what kind of fiscal challenges does Jackson County School District face today? And how do your skill sets, as you just laid them out, how do your skill sets and your experience help in those, what are going to be even more poignant fiscal challenges going forward?
Well, I think it's important to point out that a lot of the dollars that we do receive from this, well, all of the dollars that we receive from the state are fairly much earmarked for certain types of things. And so, it limits us in the decisions that we can make. But what I think is very important is when we do receive X number of dollars, is that we look at the big picture and how that's going to be used down the road. For example, we have a lot of money right now being put into technology with the implementation of the children having the tablets that they're using. It's been implemented all the way up through the 8th grade and then its intent is to go all the way through the 12th. And in my past experience with grants and when there are initiatives like that, is that we don't just see the money coming in as an initiative for that particular timeframe and then we forget about it and move on. So, support behind those initiatives, I'm going to go right on into the classroom and say, for example, you know, we did implement a lot of technology into the classroom with these tablets, but supporting our teachers and ensuring that they're able to use that so that those dollars don't just go there and sit idle in the classroom, they actually produce an outcome, student learning outcomes. That's really what we're looking for. So, managing those dollars, not just for what they are supposed to be used for, but getting our teachers proficient with using things like equipment, I think that that's huge. And of course, that's talking right in the classroom. There are other issues such as hiring, you know, the, you know, do we have enough teachers? Are they being effective? I think that how we select those teachers to use our tax dollars for, I think that is very critical. We're looking at building, you know, a whole new school, you know, for the Marianna area in some near future, hopefully. And I think the decisions that we make as far as the way that school is laid out, how it impacts the trickle-down effect, transportation, how it's going to impact the administration that works at those schools, I think all of that is going to be something that we have to look at closely. I've had quite a bit of experience with school finance, taken a lot of coursework in those areas. And as I mentioned before, I'm watching how earmarked dollars from the federal government and the state are used through the grant projects that I've worked on. I think that's going to give me a very valuable insight as to how those dollars can be distributed as we start to make some decisions in the future.
Not unlike your neighbors and surrounding counties, I believe Jackson County right now, less than a third of the people in Jackson County pay ed-borum taxes. Either they live in housing, which falls below the home state exemption numbers, so they pay no taxes, or they rent or whatever other combination of reasons. Therefore, you, just like Washington and Holmes Counties, you receive the huge majority of your school funding from the state.
That's right.
Along with that goes all of the hoops through which they expect you to jump, many of those being unfunded mandates. You mentioned mandates a minute ago. Many of those unfunded mandates really being at the heart of what causing us so much heartburn.
Sure.
Whether it's online testing, whether it's core curriculum, what, if anything, can you or any school board member sitting on that school board of any respective county, what kind of input, what kind of power or how are you empowered to be able to affect positively those situations?
Well, I think it goes back down to looking at, you know, prioritizing the need. If we sit back and we actually prioritize, where are we going to most effectively use those dollars to improve our students, not just their performance, but their whole experience? If we start there at the top, let that be the top thing. And then, we start funneling our tax dollars and the money that we do have available into those scenarios. I think the rest of it, you know, that just sets the foundation for us, if you will. Can I fix the world? No. Can I stretch a dollar further than it's going to stretch? I'm not going to sit here and say that I can do that, but I believe that having a big-picture insight, really putting the, if we really ask, what is the goal of education? What is the purpose of it? And that is to produce our future. And the future is the collection of children that we're given every day to work with. And if that becomes the priority, then the decisions that we make have to stop, have to start there at the top. And I can't work miracles. I'd love to say, I'm going to come in here, I'm going to show you how to redo all of this and it's going to be perfect. But, you know, looking for places where there is waste, looking for places where maybe the dollars are being used effectively, but not in the most effective way, and making some decisions based on cleaning up that type of thing, that's really going to be something that is a priority to me. Because I think that there may be some spots where we can tighten up those dollars a little bit and use them a little bit more effectively for a better outcome.
Yeah. Payroll typically the easiest way to find new money. Nobody likes to lose a job.
No.
Nobody likes to be that one who is responsible, at least in some part, of that person losing a job. And nobody wants more taxes.
Right.
Jackson County right now has a half-cent sales tax, I believe earmarked.
That's correct.
For the school district. To me, sales tax, just like the gasoline tax, probably the most fair tax that there is. You're not impacted by it unless you spend money.
That's right.
And Washington County tried to do that a couple of years ago by referendum and it was defeated. I don't think people realized the ramifications. In this case, we needed more bandwidth, we needed more connectivity. Again, unfunded mandates. All we're trying to do is jump through the hoops. You start losing FTE dollars and it gets your attention really quickly. All that said, when does that half-cent sales tax sunset in Jackson County? Do you know?
I am not sure. But when it gets ready to do that, that is something that I really don't mind asking the voters to consider coming back onto the table. I just, I think it's hard to sell taxes to people. You know, we don't, we've taxed for everything. But, I just want people to realize that when it does come to a point of making that decision, we only have one future and that is what we're producing in the classroom. And a lot of people say, well, my kids are gone and graduated, or I'm not involved in the school system anymore, I don't have anybody in the school system. Yes, you do. Your future's in the school system, whether you realize that or not. And I think that that's something that we really need to stress. You may not have kids in the school district, but your future's in the school district and the county's district, and it's, the county's future is there as well. And so, I don't know the exact year that that comes up.
Those same people that say, I no longer have kids or grandkids in the school system, or I don't have any, there's no benefit to me, are the same ones that complain when they go into a retail store and that person at the register can't make eye contact, can't make change, and all of those things that go along with either lack of or poor education. Within the last seven or eight years, maybe a little before that, Jackson County actually had to come up with some creative ways to come up with some funding to do some remedial training for their high school teachers to be able to teach reading. They found that kids were coming into high school not being able to read. High school teachers don't teach reading. And so, at that time, there was an effort made, and I don't know what the end result was, but obviously, you were having huge problems within the school system. We're faced with Common Core, we're faced, whatever you want to call it, the state and really above them, the feds, are dictating what we're teaching. And right now, we're teaching to the FCAT to a great extent. Good, bad, right, wrong, or indifferent, at the end of the day, our kids are simply not getting the kind of breadth of education. I'm an old guy, I know that. I had a classical education. I was fortunate enough to go to a Catholic school. I had six years of language before I got into high school. I get that, that not everybody gets that kind of education. But at the end of the day, is it so hard to expect a high school student to know who the vice president is? We don't teach civics in school right now. We don't teach many of the things. Interestingly, Facebook and social media being huge, somebody on Facebook said something along the lines of, you know, high school should have a class that teaches all of the kids before they can graduate, how to sew a button on a shirt, how to balance a checkbook, how to cook a meal. And you know, my response, I don't ever get involved in Facebook. We use Facebook a lot for business and commercial purposes, but I don't ever do it personally. I did send a response to that and my simple response was, I think that belongs with the family. I think the family. Do you think that we, as a society and as a family, are now looking toward the schools and expecting them to pick up that slack and to do the jobs that my parents would have been embarrassed if they thought the school was going to be expected to teach what they thought was their job? What are your thoughts on that?
You know what? I think that the school has always been perceived as the panacea, the cure-all for everything. If you look back during the civil rights movement, it was the school who was charged with, you know, the integration and all of that. When you look at the 80s, when the economy was, you know, out of control, it must be the schools, you know, that weren't doing their jobs because, and you saw a major shift then towards this standardized testing and towards this level of accountability. So, when you go back through history and you look at all of the things that schools were charged with in the curing and fixing of society, it's no surprise now that we do, when we look at society and we see the things that are missing or that need improvement, that the school is once again perceived as being charged with correcting those things. Yes, I believe that there is a, I realize that there is a lot of pressure on our teachers to teach to attest. And I realize how many variables that they're faced with that they do not control. But for them, they do have a time with those kids and their influence is tremendous, whether or not they're standing in front of the class teaching algebra, or whether they're teaching English. They may be teaching content, but they are modeling at the same time behaviors and expectations. And no, we can't be the panacea. We're not going to fix everything in the time that we have kids at school. And should we be responsible for that? You know, that's an argument in itself. But we do have a tremendous impact and who we have in those classrooms is very important. The school as the fixer, I don't know. You know, we've always been blamed when society's not what we think it should be. But, we're trying. We are trying and we do have a significant impact.
Do you think that the pendulum has swung too far or far enough that we're never going to get back to that moral compass, to that family unit, to that collective thinking that truly, everything does start in that family and that the family, the parents should be the role models? And I get that everybody around you becomes a role model, but have we gotten so far away that now, everything that affects a child is truly outside the home rather than in that family unit?
I think that depends greatly on who, you know, where you're looking and who you're talking about. I still see, in my dealings with the schools and my dealings with students, even my students out at the college, you know, I still see that there are very strong family units in our community and they are effective. And I want to, you know, even though it's different, having grown up in a household that had two parents, I understand what that means to have two biological parents in the home. But in addition to that, I have seen some people doing fantastic jobs with their blended families. And so, is it, I can't speak and say that I believe that because we have something that is different, that it's always a bad thing. It's not what we're used to and sometimes we think that if it's not the traditional function format that we're used to seeing, that it can't function successfully. But it's just kind of a mindset change. For example, I've seen some single moms raising kids by themselves that are way better than someone in what we would call a traditional family structure. So, is it, have we swung too far? Let me just say, I think we've swung in a different direction and how we handle that in the future is going to be very important to the success of our kids.
Yeah. Nothing truer than to say things have changed.
Oh, yes.
The old Chinese curse, "May you live in interesting times," I think has definitely come around. I guess it would be fair to say that somebody in the school board position, superintendent of schools, even as a teacher instructor, anything to do with that school system, definitely dealing with a lot more challenges than they did in the 50s.
Oh, yes.
Or the 60s. We're talking now, and we won't go there because I'm not going to put you on the spot politically, but we're talking about issues around transgender situations. We're talking about, I mean, just so many mind-boggling issues. Who would have thought 10 years ago, let alone 50 years ago, that we'd be dealing with these? That said, do you feel that that school board member, that that superintendent of school, that that teacher within that school system has a tougher time and more challenges and must be more creative and more thoughtful about everything that they do than they did in the past?
A hundred percent so. There are a lot of other challenges that are taking place. Let me use the example for homework. A teacher typically, in the past, sends homework home two or three nights a week. The expectation is there, the child will do it. And in the past, most of them did, you know, and they had a parent or someone that sat down with them while they were fixing dinner and they had a conversation about the homework. And so, that, you know, was a big part of their grade, what do they do at home? Today, to me, homework is invalid. You don't know the environment to which you're sending work home. And so, to say that it's different and what we can expect, not in performance. I'm not saying that we can't expect the same level, if not a higher level, of performance from our students. But I think the way we go about drawing that out of our students because of the different variables that are part of what goes on every day in these kids' lives. I mean, if you want, you want to, you want to know where the challenges lie, get on the school bus and ride around and see where those kids get off every day, you know. So, yes, our teachers are faced with, and the school board members and superintendents, not just in issues of home life, but the way our society perceives different controversial topics, you know, those things are all pieces that will come before myself or whoever ends up in this school board seat, where we'll have to look at that. And then, keep in mind that we don't, we aren't just teaching children from a traditional middle-class mindset. We have a very broad range of people that we're serving. And that's exactly what we're doing. We're serving all kids. And so, that means understanding all of their backgrounds and all of their needs. And that's a challenge. Yes, it's very different than it used to be.
Who would have thought even not that many years ago, that we would have to give an elementary school child a backpack with enough food to last through the weekend? More importantly and more poignantly, give him instructions on how to hide that food so that his parents or his siblings don't take it away from him, so that he can make it through the weekend to get back, so that he can get that meal on Monday. Gina, we live, we live in a weird time. We live, the problems, this is commentary, not question, I don't understand why we're sending literally billions and trillions of dollars overseas when we have very compelling problems right here.
Yes.
I know there's more to it than I'll ever know, more than I'll ever want to know. I know that's politics. Our needs right here at home are huge, huge. Who would have known that we would be using the terms "active shooter" in elementary school in the same sentence? Let's talk about that for a moment. We've got school resource officers, SROs. Obviously, a lot of that falls on the sheriff's office in the respective county in which we're talking. In this case, Jackson County, do you have SROs in every elementary school in Jackson County?
No, we do not. Uh-uh. We have, in, when we speak elementary school, if the elementary school is part of like a K-12 system, like over in Malone, that is a K-12 system there, and so, we do have an SRO there. The majority of our resources are focused at the middle and high school levels at this point.
The older children.
Yes.
More looking at the internal problems.
I would think that's it, you know, you know, when you're going to have fights and things at school, having someone there to handle that, that's where it's at now. Personally, you know, we talked about funding earlier, I would encourage the expansion of those resources. I know there is a lot to talk about as far as money and stuff, but... I know there is a lot to talk about as far as money and stuff, but expansion of those resources is important to me. I'll tell you why. I teach at Chipola College, and in the past, we have kind of, we haven't always felt like we had to be terribly concerned about some of the issues, active shooter and so forth that you had talked about. But as things started to change, and we would have a situation or two that made us concerned, not frightened, but concerned, the college looked into really securing our campus and helping us to know what to do as faculty members and how to recognize issues with our students. And it just really gave us a sense of, like a blanket that they were putting around us to help us to have the resources that we needed. And I will tell you, that that was very comforting. And to know that, can we prevent everything that's ever going to happen? Can we predict it? No. But I think that it's very important for everybody, not just the kids to feel safe, not just the parents to understand their child is going to a safe environment, but for everybody within the school to feel like that they are, you know, that they are going to the safest possible situation. So it is a changing time. And when we first started looking at that kind of training, I think our administrators were a little concerned that we would all be frightened, that we'd get into this panic mode about, oh my, every person that looks at us funny is going to be an active shooter. But it wasn't like that. It was totally different. It was a relief. And I know that Jackson County schools have, they've done a lot of that kind of training, they have worked with their teachers, and I think that providing a secure environment is going to be something that just makes us feel comfortable as our society does change. It is very different. And you never know, when you've got little kids and, you know, exposed to violence at home, they tend to understand what it means to bring it to school. It is a different society. But all we can do is adjust and be open-minded about it, rather than shut ourselves off and pretend that it's not happening.
Yeah, frankly, a law enforcement officer on campus is just a target to an active shooter, and that's the first person they're going to go after. I think that really, I mean, at the end of the day, sure, we're going to feel better, and I'm sure they're going to be great to have there. I don't think it's the answer to the question necessarily. Kate Smith Elementary School, brand-new school here in Washington County, the state legislature saw our need, we had 50, 60-year-old facility, we had more outbuilding space than we had, you know, real building space, and $26 million. We caught a kiss from every direction. We're truly blessed insofar as our need was at a time when construction costs were down, when contractors were hungry, everybody was bidding low, and monies were available. We got $26 million. Now we have, from all over the state, literally, and the southeast, we've got people coming right now to look at Kate Smith Elementary, which is almost done, which is going to be open for this coming fall. And what they're finding is that there's only about half as much money per capita in their respective county available, and that money will only go about half as far as it did because we are now experiencing a resurgence in construction, so costs are going back up. So they're only getting about 25% of what we fortunately got. You say you need another school in Jackson County at some point. I imagine there's always going to be something of a need for some kind of other facility. Going forward, where do you go for that kind of funding? Obviously, the state in large part able to help, but if indeed, they can only help you to a certain percentage of what they were able to maybe 10 years ago, how can you get creative? Because you're not talking about stewardship of money at that point, because it's pretty hard to come up with a cut of $26 million in your budget, even over 10 years. So where do you go from there? I know nobody likes taxes, and I know you're not going to have a pat answer to this. What are some of your thoughts going forward? I got to tell you, frankly, we've had school board candidates sit in your seat and say, well, we need lots of car washes and cookie sales. Well, I'm sorry, but that's all. Yeah, so, you know, I mean, but candidly, what are your options? And if not specific options, what's your thought process? Where do you go from there? I know a lot of lobbying in Tallahassee is necessary.
That has always been critical, and, you know, that's always, you know, that's something that we do have in place, and we have very positive relationships with our people in Tallahassee. But outside of the traditional stuff that we're used to, there is a lot of grant money out there that people never apply for. There are, yes, there are always catches and hoops that you have to jump through, but there are monies out there, and not just monies that come from the government agencies. There are a lot of corporate foundations out there that have pots of money that people never go after, that people aren't aware of. And so one of the things that I would like to see us take a look at is to see if there is a spot where we can go after corporate dollars. And they might not come in large sums of money, and we're not necessarily talking that they're going to just say, oh, can you, would you like a million dollars today? But every bit counts, and every thing that we can get to better our schools, we should be looking at, we should be going after that money. We have schools that fall into certain criteria that these corporate people are looking to help to grow and to facilitate. And I think that looking deeper into that, like I said, my background with grant work, I think will facilitate that. So there are options, there are options, and that is one of the areas where I think that we could do a little bit more digging.
We are enjoying, tongue-in-cheek, what they're calling the boomerang generation. We've got a third of the kids that are graduating from a traditional four-year college, moving back home with mom and dad, they've got $100,000 plus in school debt, and they simply don't have job qualifications. They've got a liberal arts degree, they've got an anthropology degree, they've got an archaeology degree, whatever it happens to be. Even some of the business degrees don't qualify you to go get a job. They get you into the interview process. And in all fairness, there are, most corporations require a college degree. But when you call that plumber on a Sunday, and he charges you $100 an hour, and we gripe about it, and we go, my goodness, you know, I'm a nuclear physicist, and I don't make that kind of money. It's arguable that the manual labor and the manual arts are more needed than ever. We sit right now on what we consider the jewel in Washington County, what used to be Washington Homes Technical Center, now Florida Panhandle Technical College, over 40 degree and certification programs. Every one of them, within a year, people being able to come out and start at $30,000, $35,000. Next door to us is the drafting program. Just recently, Eastern Shipyards in Panama City hired four kids, and I call them kids because they're all very young adults, before the class was finished. They got jobs for $35,000 apiece, they didn't even finish the class, they went right to work. All that said, you come from that very fertile Chipola College environment, not that long ago, Chipola Junior College, and still offering some of that vocational training. What are your candid thoughts on the effort maybe that needs to be made within the secondary education, middle school, high school, letting kids know what the opportunities are for dual enrollment? For, if nothing else, getting a job certification that will allow you to take a well-paid job while you work your way through a traditional four-year college for that degree? What are your thoughts about that?
Well, I think, I'm a very good example of that in my family. I have multiple degrees, doctoral degree and all of that kind of stuff, and then I have a brother that has two years at Chipola and works in the construction industry, and he is by far more successful financially than I will ever be with all of the degrees that I have. I come from a vocational background, having a business education degree, and then my master's was in adult and vocational education, so I'm very passionate about that. But one of the issues that we have faced with getting students into those programs has been a mindset that we've had a hard time changing. In the late 60s, early 70s, when we started tracking students into different career areas originally, the idea was if you were smart and very capable, you went towards the college-bound degree path, and then if you were less capable, we would track you into areas that were more hands-on and workforce areas. And overcoming that mindset has been a real challenge in education. But what I'm hoping that we're starting to see is when you look out into the community, and like you mentioned, the fact that maybe someone comes to your house on a Sunday and gets $100 to fix a pipe that's leaking, and you step back and look and think, I'm not making that much an hour. I would love for our community to start to realize the value in obtaining careers that don't necessarily require a bachelor's degree, so that we might, can increase the productivity in our communities. There are so many options. You know, we have, you know, the school here, we have Chipola College, offering, you know, a lot of options, and really growing and expanding into offering all kinds of options for our students. And even if they don't choose that as a post-high school option, if we could expose them to those training opportunities while they're in school, so that they can then make an educated decision about where they would like to go in the future. So a lot of options, there's something that I'm very passionate about. An obstacle that we've had a hard time overcoming as far as mindset, but that's really, that's really where the jobs of the future are going to be. Those people that can get out and do and repair, or have the technical background to run the stuff like we're using today, this kind of equipment, and doing the drafting and automotive, that's a big thing. You know, if my car doesn't run, I can't go to that job regardless of whether I've got a degree or not.
And that's become more computers than it has automotive.
Yes, it has, it has. So that is an area where I find a lot of passion, and I could go on about that for hours, but something that I would like to see us becoming more focused on.
Yeah, and where that education comes together with economic development. Martha Compton, our director here at Florida Panhandle Technical College, she's going to businesses as part of the Northwest Florida Regional Manufacturing Council, and saying to this business, what kind of welders do you need? Those are the kind we will teach here. What do you need in the way of cybersecurity, in the way of pharmacy tech? Instead of saying, hey, we've got a welder, where can you use him? We're saying, what kind of a welder do you need? And whether it's culinary or cosmetology, and anything in between, it's more important to get that feedback from that prospective business, from an economic development point of view. You're not going to have a business come in if they don't have a ready and available staff of potential workers.
That's right.
I appreciate your time today. It was great to talk candidly about all of these things. And obviously, being that we are sitting here on the campus of Florida Panhandle Technical College, it's nice to speak to a kindred spirit and someone who embraces that philosophy that there definitely is a part for that training of manual laborers at the end of the day. But more importantly, who are making a good salary and who are immediately ready to earn that money as soon as they get out of school. Is there anything we haven't talked about, Gina? Is there anything that you would add in the way of information that perhaps a prospective voter should have? Anything that we haven't touched upon?
I really think that we've covered a lot of material today, but I just want the voters to know that my experience, I think, is going to be an asset to this community. My goal is, I don't have a particular agenda, I'm not out to correct this or change that. I just want to serve. And I want the voters to know that I understand what it means to be in the classroom, I value so much the work that our teachers do. Like I said, I'm in there with them every week, seeing what they're doing, and I want to be a support system for them. I want to, I just really want to serve. And I hope that the voters of this district will see that I have an extreme passion and enthusiasm for education and that I want to get in there, I want to make a difference.
I'll tell you what, I'm going to give you that opportunity. If you want to look right into that camera lens, speak right to those prospective voters, and tell them why they should vote for you.
I would love to. I want to thank you guys for having me here today to talk about this position. I'm excited, and I have an enthusiasm for education that I really think that I can use to make a difference in our community. I want to support our students, I want to support our teachers, our administration, the other team members on the board, support our superintendent, so that we can grow our school system. As we always say, children are 100% of our future. That is a fact, and it doesn't matter what area we go into, those children need the very best education possible to be successful down the road. So I would love to talk with anyone who has questions or comments or concerns, I'd love to hear what you have to say, and I hope that you will consider me as your next school board member when you go to the polls on August 30th. Thank you.
Thanks for being here today.
Thanks.
Best of luck going forward. We are allowing all of the candidates to have multiple opportunities to come on. We'll let you know when that next round comes along, and if you're available, love to have you come on. What I like about the second and successive interviews is that they're a little more relaxed. We've got all the boilerplate stuff out of the way, and at that time, we can talk more about what's going on in Jackson County than a hard sell of vote for me. So again, thanks for taking the time.
Thank you.
Our guest today has been Gina McAllister, currently District 2 School Board candidate in Jackson County, another in our series of Meet the Candidates. Hopefully, you've learned something today. I certainly do with every single show. I say that, and many people say, oh, that can't be true, and it could be no more true. This is, this show is my opportunity to learn more about our surroundings, in this case, inviting all of the announced political candidates from Holmes, Jackson, Washington, and Bay Counties here to the show, so that you can virtually meet them, so that when you enter the ballot box, you can be a more educated, informed voter in making the right choices as it pertains to you and your lifestyle and your respective county. We'll be right back.